We'll call the June 11th, 2025 Planning Board to order. So we'll take care of the minutes and the manifest was the manifest that I didn't sign the last time, so I signed it. Is she gonna come in or are we just gonna go over? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even see you.
She's right in front.
Okay.
She like past tense.
Eyes are, eyes are going away.
I have pictures that I sent to Cam, so he's gonna put them up on the screen.
Which one would you like to?
I don't care, whatever.
This is for the cafe.
Yeah.
Scrapping.
Good night, Ben.
There we go.
Give me one sec.
Yeah. Okay, there's a new parking lot as you guys want to leave the line. This is all Porter particulars, however, this space will turn into our vendor unloading and loading area for the market. Across the street, Legion has allowed us to use that parking lot for this first market. We're gonna go market to market because they sometimes rent it out. That was my, if you could just get a blanket, yes, please use it. So for this purpose, we're gonna have, we'll have the other one. We'll have the vendors load and unload over here. And then they will move your vehicles which are in a contract and will bring one vehicle to people next. They'll park around as I think. Or up in the back of the Legion parking lot. And then we have a printed sign, like big banners that will have for these two parking entrances. And then there's already a sign for additional parking in the back. We'll do the best we can with like trying to keep cafe parking in the lines. Where, let's see how this goes for the first one. Then, these are all my vendors, so everybody's got a 10 by 10 space with extra footage on each side of them. It'll be walk up to the grass area. Questions, comments, concerns?
PD is okay with crossing the road?
PD did not have any qualms with anything, yeah. They wanted Chief Duquette to just see how the first one goes.
Okay.
If it looks like it's gonna be a hazard, then we'll hire them for that detail, but I don't know until we see it.
Right.
He also said they can park along the road because you can pull the, pull the, pull off.
Right, 'cause now that, how you get up to the corner.
The issue isn't the parking, the issue is walking, I think.
If they want something out of the market, they'll walk.
I see.
I don't have any.
I'm good.
Lots, she met, she met the amount of lots that we wanted.
Yep. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion you approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. Come on Saturday, 8:00 AM, yay!
Okay.
Bye, guys.
So what we have is a public hearing for a sub, minor subdivision at 70 Griffin Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire. Map 405 Lot 39, Tyler Kuker and Alina Bastone of 502 West River Road, Hooks at New Hampshire. In accordance with state statutes, you are hereby notified that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the George B. White Building for an application for a minor subdivision for Tyler Kuker and Alina Bastone of 502 West Row, West Ri, huh, West River Road, Hooks at New Hampshire, for 70 Griffin Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, map 405 Lot 39, owned by Richard Cruz. The intent of the application is to subdivide map 405 Lot 39 consisting of 39.371 acres, creating two lots. The minor subdivision would result in map 405 Lot 39 consisting of 26.089 acres and map 405 Lot 39-2 consisting of 7.331 acres and map 405 Lot 31-3 consisting of 6.551 acres. You are invited to attend and offer your comments. If you are unable to be present, the board will accept your comments in writing prior to the hearing and read them aloud.
Aren't we here at the hearing?
Yes. So if people, if people wanted to write a letter in, they could send a letter in if they couldn't make it. That's all, that's, that's all it's about. Okay, take it away.
Good evening, my name's Joel Connolly, I'm with the debate group. I'm the surveyor, prepared the plans. So like I said, we're looking to create two new building lots. We are asking for a few waivers, mostly related to limiting the survey work to the area of the new lots. Just to kind of keep the cost, you know, down. Not, you know, not necessarily spending clients' money to traverse around entire property. Same thing with the wetlands, kind of limit it to those, those areas. We're showing soils based on NCRS soils data. The one other waiver that we're asking for is to not do a test pit at this moment because they're looking, you know, they're still kind of planning on where they want things to go, so they're, they don't require state subdivision approval, so as far as that, it's really just for the town's benefit. And it's, it's an added cost to go out there multiple times with an excavator to dig holes if they're not sure where the test, uh, leach field's gonna go at this moment in time. Both lots meet all the requirements, separate requirements, building envelopes. There's plenty of room, I did a, on sheet three, there's actually like a, a preliminary just kind of layout, you know, crew out the lots, that they both have sight distance, plenty of room to easily grade them out, you know, with a nice yard, you know, area for a leach field to go, plenty of room for the well radiuses and everything. So other than that, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. As far as the shape, we tried to kind of work with the, the shape of the parcel as a whole. It's kind of like a, almost like a triangular shape and the lot to the, to the right kind of leaves a kind of weird little spot in the back here, so.
Can I have a cross picture, please? Seeing the lot to the right you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like, it leaves kind of an odd shape there. So we tried to work with the shape of the lot and the land itself. The, the first dividing line, we kind of ran, you know, along an existing path that goes down to the, to the swamp there. That was something that was discussed, you know, when they were doing the purchase and sales. So we kind of followed those angles, so I mean, they're not quite perfect of the road necessarily, but they kind of do fit with the overall, like, breakdown of the lot and allowing the lot to actually be then further divided into another two lots if, you know, down the future at some point.
Joel, do you have extra copies of the, of larger plans that the board can take a look?
Large one, yeah, I have one copy of a large one.
Okay, that should be.
Two lots.
Yeah.
So a quick question while you're standing there.
Yeah.
This is lot one.
Yep.
Lot two.
Yep.
The parent lot.
Yep.
So what's this little?
That, that's an existing lot.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with that.
It's got that little.
That's what I'm saying, the lot lines are kind of angled this way a little bit to kind of just like work with the land.
Now, is this an actual pond?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's actually, yes.
What's the, what's the acreage from the pond to the lot line?
Uh, I'm not quite sure, it's, I mean, it's all, it's all kind of swampy back there. Everything's basically wet from.
So how much from the front edge do they have back to the wet area? How many, how many acres does that is?
The upland is 117,000 square feet on that one.
On the middle lot, 117,000?
Yeah, yeah, the middle lot upon it, yeah, 117,000.
Roughly three acres.
Yeah. 2.7.
Okay.
Do you want to look at the big one?
Just open it up so that they can take a look at it.
We only have the little.
Yeah, just there, here for you guys. So this is the front of the wetland, this is about three acres.
Where do you think the driveways are gonna be?
Um, that was something that, and I don't know, I can't, I mean, talk to my clients that way, he wants it. Originally, he was talking about kind of putting it down towards like the left edge of that lot. But as far as just, you know, ease grading them out for me to, for just kind of proven mode, I kind of put them in the center. Are you still planning on putting it down towards, maybe towards, I think in the end, it's probably gonna end up down to the left side of that lot on the.
We're talking about the middle lot still?
Yeah, yeah, uh, no, the, the right lot. The middle lot, the middle lot is, really hasn't been planned out at all. That was kind of like a secondary, originally it was just gonna be a one lot subdivision.
So the, the.
And then it was kind of the, um.
The lot with the acute angle on it is the one that's 7.33 acres. This one here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the, the middle lot is not the one that we're really looking at right now, we're looking at the one on the right.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we created both of them, so that's what, you know. The, the one on the right's gonna be, you know, built sooner, that's the one, that was the initial intent. Like I said, and then, you know, his brother coming in wanting that a lot, so they've, they've worked on an agreement on that, so they've decided to create two of them.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah, what's Fred?
Go ahead, Kim.
Should move to.
Yeah, accept it.
So I did review the plan, I do believe the plan is complete, so I would recommend accepting it as complete.
Can I get a motion for that?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor accepting the plan?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all unanimous.
And I'm not sure if the board wants to go through each waiver and.
So you're looking for two right now, right?
Two, uh, two lots?
Two waivers?
Or two waivers.
There's, there's waivers that kind of lump into two different sections of the subdivision regulations. But I, I think we, we may want to go one by one.
Yeah.
And if you want, I can read them.
Yeah, let's, let's, um, let's go through the waiver.
Okay.
So waiver requests from section 3-3, C305, to not showing meters and bounds for the remainder of Lot 39. That is something that I have no problem with. Waiver from section 3-3, C307, not showing all boundaries of residual lots. Again, I have no problem with that. 3-3, C3013, not showing poorly slash fairly, poorly drained soils or water bodies. Again, don't have a problem, these are large lots and they have delineated where I think is appropriate. 3-3, C3017, not showing jurisdictional wetlands on the remainder of Lot 39, same thing for me. 3-3, C3B4, use of USDA web soil survey and lieu of site specific soil mapping. Again, I have no concerns there. Section 3-3, C3B4, uh, C3B6, not showing one test pit and 4,000 square foot septic receiving area per lot. I think I, I'm going to leave that up to the discretion of the board. And then 3-3, C4, C40, no test pit or percolation data provided for each lot, again. I'd leave that up to the, to the discretion of the board. So it's really, if my, for the plant, town planners' recommendation, I have no problem with the first, one, two, three, four, five waiver requests, and I will make sure those can get on the record. And then maybe the board may want to discuss the other two from this section regarding waiving requiring test pit for the subdivision plan.
When you're saying that for the residual parcel, I'm generally okay with it except to the extent that you have an abutting parcel that you would want those markers for the delineation. The long, this one right here, Cam, the, the long one.
Mm-hmm.
That gets delineated as part of the 39-3.
The.
Whatever the deline.
The boundaries or?
Yeah. And you, you clearly want the boundaries delineated for the, of the lots or.
Which, well, yeah, they are.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, the wetlands and the bound, the boundaries are.
It's the remainder, it's the non-lot remainders.
Yes, yeah.
So it would, instead of being, uh, let's just say it's a square, instead of being four, it'd be two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just, just so we're clear on that.
Yep.
Why would we not want to mark all the boundaries?
Uh, it's just an expense issue, it's just a matter of like having traversed, traversed the entire length of it.
I realize that would be an expense issue, but why would we not want to clearly mark all our boundaries for future, not just this?
Are you talking about the wetlands or the boundaries?
We're talking boundaries right now, I think.
Yeah, Cam had said earlier on.
I mean, yeah, the, the existing boundaries are all marked with stone walls and such. I mean, there's been plans done for the Windsor lot that has the map and, you know, those physically in the field, there's stone walls pretty much bounding most of this. And even along the road, the same thing, it's just not a matter of going up there and setting drill holes and actually putting math to all that stuff.
Right, but I don't like the term pretty much and mostly. I want to know if, I know if I'm buying a piece of property, I want to know exactly where my boundaries are for the future, if this, if this property ever gets sold again to somebody else, if this family decides to sell it again. We'd want to know exactly where the boundaries are. It just, it, to me, it leaves an open door for somebody else to step in and say, your boundary isn't there, it's back here because you didn't have it marked correctly on the map.
For the, for the, if you're buying one of the two lots, you're getting everything marked. It's for the, it's for the, the party that's, the parent lot.
Right.
The parent lot getting sold? No, the parent lot's not getting sold.
I realize that.
So I, I had the same concern, and I would have thought that a, a secondary waiver, holding us harmless with regard to that, would, I mean, if they, you know, we don't want to be hit with, with that issue. If they're taking that risk for.
We, we did our two lots off the farm. Instead of separating the 350 acres, we just separated 10. We didn't have to do the whole entire 350 acres extra, all this extra, there's no reason, we're stealing these two.
And one of, one of the conditions of approval that I would recommend is a certification of monumentation anyway.
I was just gonna bring that up, so. In order to have an actual subdivision, you gotta have the pins in. So on the back lot, I would have, based up here on the front, Lot 39-3, are those drill holes in the rocks or are those pins that are gonna have to be placed for monuments?
Uh, those are drill holes and actually, yeah, I'm not showing, I didn't show the proposed monuments on the corners, I should have done that. So yeah, there'll be an iron rod at the, um, for 39-2 and 39-3 meet. There'll be also one where the angle point is on that line. And then both the rear lines.
Okay.
Will be monumented by iron rods.
So there's a point, there's already a point at the end where that really sharp angle is, there's already a drill hole or rod there?
Yeah, yeah, the one between the remainder lot and 39-3.
So that one's all delineated?
Yep.
Okay. And there's already a pin in the front corner on the left there?
Yep.
So you, basically, you've got to put in the, the ones for the two new lots. The one that's a straight line and then the one with the, the middle, so you've got what, one, two, three, four, five pins to put in? Am I right? On the, on the right lot, you got a beak over on the right-hand side, it's, uh.
Yeah, but that's already.
There's a pin.
That's already, yeah, there's all monuments on that side, it's, yeah, it's just gonna be, really, yeah, four, four points that have to be set.
Pin, 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 pin.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was planning to set them before we finalize the plan, so that's.
So you'll have to put five pins.
I'll show what was set is. These are all pins.
Cause that pin's already over there on the other lot, on the far right-hand corner.
Yeah, this one, this one, there's an angle on this one. Cause this is the angle here.
Yeah.
That's what we need it.
Seems like this thing, I guess he can guess it.
That's why I asked for the copy, I guess it will. I didn't know we had that coming.
We're at that age where we're fighting the cheaters. Well, the other one is basically the test pits. I don't have a problem with the test pits myself because it's, it's larger than five acres and you can't get a building permit till they have a leach field plan anyway.
My question is on lot, the middle lot, lot two.
Mm-hmm.
The building envelope is pretty small up front. What's the, what's the area that building, building envelope is? With the wetland setbacks and the setbacks on the side and the front?
I'm not exactly sure what the actual building envelope is, I mean.
Even though you have five acres, half of this is wet?
Yeah, yeah.
So what, what's the area in the front from the road with your 37 and a half setback and the 40 from the front? You got a heavy wet lens, 100-foot setback.
Mm-hmm.
What's, what's the area that's left?
Yeah, I'd have to calculate that, I don't have that listed anywhere. I mean, I mean, it looks like it's small cause there are large lots. I mean, but in reality, I mean, that's, that's a, you know, I'm showing a large house with a two-story garage and, you know, a 40-foot backyard, 40-foot backyard before, you know, grading down the slope, so I mean, there's definitely a lot of, I mean.
Just, just by, by, by thumb, it looks like it's, the building envelope is probably, supposedly two, an acre and an acre and a half. And that's gonna, that's gonna accommodate the leach field.
Yeah.
I mean, just, and, and the well and, and so, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, and the well, the well radiuses can encroach into all those items. The well itself, you know, needs to be outside of the stuff, but the, and, and the leach field.
I'd be surprised if you get an acre of building space, of building, build a envelope. I'm trying to figure out.
Uh, I definitely think, I'm, yeah, I'd say, I'd say it's at least an acre.
My thumb's a bit thick, but, uh. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I'd be less concerned about, about two than three.
Like I said, I mean, I'm showing a really lengthy driveway, a house, you know, a large yard, the grading, and there's still, you know.
Drive was gonna be on, on, on three?
On three, yeah, I don't know where the driveway's gonna be exactly yet.
And two, two is the one you're focused on right now, right?
Yeah, two's the one we're focused on. And they're looking to possibly bring it closer to where that trail is on the, on the left edge.
One, three, this one's two. This is more than this, I'm having a question on this one.
This is my question.
Yeah, so I said this.
Oh, yes. Yeah, this one here.
And I guess my, the, the concern I have with the five-acre argument is that it looks like five acres.
But it's not.
But it's, it's, you know, for, I mean.
Don't say you actually have a building, you have only an acre.
Yeah. When you get a five-acre lot, it's not that 100% of it has to be built.
And.
But a, a three-acre lot, you, you do have to do a, a test pit. You know, the state doesn't, I mean, I've just been through this, so. It, I mean, this walks in, technically is a five-acre lot, but it walks and talks in reality like a. Yeah. So I, I mean, I wouldn't want to have to deal with any of the consequence, I mean, consequence of that. If, if they have to go to ZBA for variance for any of that, I don't want to be part of the hardship.
What would, I mean, it's meeting all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So why, why would it need to go to ZBA?
Well, no, no, if, if it turns out it's difficult to get a test pit, to, to get your leach field in.
They won't have a problem with test pit.
Yeah, wait, wait, when are you going to ZBA?
Lot number three, 39-3, where the leach, potential leach field is, okay? It's a fill. So even if the, you can have 50% ledge inside a leach field, okay? So, and you only have to have two feet of cover over the ledge to be a leach field. So you're gonna have 50% and only two feet of cover. So right now, they have a fill, okay? So the grade at the back of the leach field is 844. The grade at the front of the leach field is 840. So they strip the ground here, let's say they get a test pit, they get 18 inches, they strip it and they're down on ledge, they're gonna have four feet of cover over the ledge.
Okay, so, I'm thinking of, yeah.
So, and then on the other one, the grade at the front of the leach field is 854. They show the grade at the back of the leach field of 854. And you're at, excuse me, the finished grade at the back of the leach field at 854. The actual grade is 850. And the other corner of the potential leach field is probably like at 853. So by the time you strip that out, in that potential leach field area, what's the square footage of that? Do you have an idea on your dotted line? Is it 20 by 40?
Yeah, about that, I, I, I basically just copied one from another plan we've done.
Okay, so you're.
Just, just a ballpark, like.
Like a stone and pipe leach field?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
They're always different, depending on the perk test, so I just use a general.
And right now, the basement walkout is 856, so it's two feet above the leach field in the basement, so. And the first floor is at 865, so it's a nine-foot basement, you know, with a nine-foot wall and then walkout. So they've got pitch to a leach field. And even then, if they had to move the leach field.
And even then, if they had to move the leach field back, they could towards the wetland setback if there were an issue with ledge in the right front corner. Okay? And then they would certainly have their minimum of two feet to ledge, uh, to ledge with the leach field.
For cover.
For cover. So I know you're looking at all the wetlands in the back, but wherever all their building is, is the yep-land soil. So it's a matter of, you know, they've got, they've got the room to move the house.
In the field if they have to.
In the field if they have to, on both lots. Now, like you said, if they were three-acre lots, test pits. But, you know, it's, I'm just, I'm just giving you information about what, how it would be built.
That'll actually be an issue if thirty nine two gets further subdivided. There was mention of a further subdivision.
Oh, no, no, the remainder lot, of the parent, the parent lot.
You're talking about the parent?
Yeah, the parent lot, just kinda keep it in that shape rectangular. So if in the future that ever got subdivided...
It goes thirty-nine, thirty-nine three, thirty-nine two. So the only one that, the only one that really can be subdivided again, it's thirty-nine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was just, it was a mindset of future thought.
The parent lot.
That parent lot, keeping that rectangular as much as possible for, you know, keeping its value as best, as possible.
So how long would it take you to get your monumentation and the pins?
Well, we can do that, you know, within the next week, early.
You guys have more courses? Any, any more concerns?
I guess we're...
Nope.
Conditional approval, waiving all requested, allowing all requested waivers?
Except for the, the pins. We want the pins in.
Pins in.
Yep, pins in.
So the basic will be the one that we're gonna be waiving is the test pits because of the, the lot size.
Size.
That's it.
Well...
And what's the other one, Cam? Well... So you're, are you, for the pins, you mean for the new lots is what you wanna see?
Yeah, we, we need to get those in so that it's...
But you're not asking for a waiver to show the, whatever the pins may be for the new lots, correct?
Oh, no, yeah, no, no. I'm planning on setting all those.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, the waivers all just, any of that stuff's for the remainder lot. So we've monumented past...
The parent lot.
Yeah, 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 the parent lot, yep.
That's...
Yeah, so, yeah, we've monumented everything past that line.
All the pins on the subdivided lots would be there.
Right, so, so Joel said he will put those on the, the plan.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll set them first, then, show, update plan.
So bef, before you approve the waivers, um, is there, if there's not, if I'm missing it, could you add a note to the plan about the, that's, um, just referencing the wetlands delineation by John P. Hayes and, and the date? If I, I may have missed it.
I might've missed, yeah, no, I thought I had put it on there. Must miss it. I will add that note.
Okay, great.
And, yeah, I'm gonna give this a sample now, too.
Very. So the only, the only waiver, I should say, the waivers, we're granting a waiver on the parent lot for the monumentations, pins and... Yeah, is, if you approve the waivers as requested, that's ultimately what you'll be... Right, and then...
And, and, and the, and the wetlands delineation on the parent lot, wasn't that all the requests?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And the other waiver is for the test pits on the two new lots. Correct.
Correct.
And there's a few others that we talked about, but, yeah. And I, we have them listed. They're in the application, so... Yeah.
The use of, of the online for the wetlands.
Yes.
I guess I'll move it as such, as amended.
The second? Okay, hold on. What we're gonna be granting is conditional approval.
Yes, condition.
Conditional approval. And then once you get the pins in for the property lots, it will be approved. And to, do you wanna add a certificate of monumentation as a condition? Monumentation as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so Errol moved. Jared's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
How long do you need for this conditional approval to meet those?
I mean, I can get that plan back through in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, do you want thirty days, sixty?
Yeah, that's plenty. Thirty, yeah, thirty should be plenty, cause it's, I'll be...
Want this plan?
Oh, uh, okay. If you wanna keep it, you have it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll hold on to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, you said no? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Take care. Pete? What's that?
I just wanted to say something.
Go ahead.
So, the last meeting, we were here, we were talking about affordable housing and... And this is, this is a scenario where, you know, first time home buying shelters, one, find a lot, or the really modest, start a home.
We, we just did affordable housing.
And keep Deerfield in Deerfield.
Did he say there was a three-car garage?
Tom's, Tom's building a Shangri-La, I know.
Tom's building it. It's not affordable.
I know.
To be elaborate.
I know. All right, all right, thanks, Amy. All right.
Didn't Jeanie walk in?
She was in the meeting already. She left. She was in the, in the meeting in the back room.
Oh, okay, cause I thought, I thought she had more stock.
Shh, don't even...
No, I, I don't think so for this meeting. And so, uh, we, we were gonna have Nate come and talk about the impact fees.
Yep.
Uh, this week, unfortunate... Yeah, you can take... If you, if you wanna, keep it, that's all right. Okay, so you were gonna take them?
He injured his shoulder, um, last week. Very unlike Nate. He hasn't been in the office all week, which I have never witnessed, uh, since knowing Nate. So he should be coming at the next meeting. We'll talk about the impact fees. So I just wanted to update there. We're, I have a draft of the CIP.
Excuse me, could you guys, could you guys head up the stairs?
We need to keep having a meeting here.
Excuse me, can you guys head upstairs, please? Um, go ahead. Or the next meeting?
The next meeting, we're gonna be talking about impact fees as well as the CIP.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I, I don't have anything for us tonight to discuss on that. But, so stay tuned for the next meeting.
So we have minutes.
You do have minutes.
You don't want it? Okay, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You've already signed these, right?
Yeah, I signed that, yeah. Sorry about that, Cam.
No, it's...
Yeah, that blonde's kicking in. I don't know about you guys, but I got stuff to do. If you're good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You doing the manifest?
Already did it. That was, I was supposed to sign that the last time and I didn't.
That's a, that's a leftover.
Yeah.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.